I don't really have any questions. Did you get any other applications? Did we get any other applications for the housing, for the Housing Authority Board?
Not for the Housing Authority. When do we get to appoint the, um, the new block party, I mean block party?
Right now?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, today? The King is, is, his resume was very, very good.
Yes.
So was, um, Haley's.
Yeah, I think, um...
And I like the guy, Lewis.
Good evening, welcome to the City of Chester City Council Meeting this evening, Wednesday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. As always, we open with a prayer invocation, followed by pledge of allegiance. He doesn't even wait to be introduced, but if he has done invocation today, Minister Randall Moten? All right, of the Christian Church of Chester, all rise.
Bless us to the Lord. Eternal God, our Father, we come this evening first thanking you for another day's journey. We thank you for the privilege of coming to you in prayer one more time. Oh God, we pray that you would bless this council, your God, with knowledge and understanding, Lord, as they deliberate on the issues going on this week. We pray, Lord, that you would touch their hearts and their minds, but then they come together on one accord, your God, and need, with wisdom, with discernment, and with sound judgment, your God, that will lead you to the good of the City of Chester and its people, that may be to your glory and good in your eyes, your God. This is a my goodness, amen.
This is the Act of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Moten. Let's see who's here, roll call.
Councillors Gibson?
Present.
Green?
Present.
West?
Present.
Davis?
Present.
Mayor Roots?
Present.
Do we have minutes from the last meeting? We did.
I did receive some minutes.
Kansas has none.
Okay.
I did receive some minutes, um, from, what date was that? Maybe we'll approve it on the next meeting.
Yeah, she don't have them on here, on the agenda.
I think they came out yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
This is the time for public comment on agenda items only. Hopefully you guys picked up the agenda which was at the door. If you do have any comments, just step to the mic. Seeing and hearing none, let's keep it moving. Uh, Mayor, Council, old business, new business, anything you want to share? I'll share a bit of new business. Bring up my notes so I don't cheat. But Amtrak was, I don't know if the right word is awarded, but has received seven point seven million dollars to install fencing throughout the City of Chester for, uh, protection of us going up on the tracks. So, that's federal money, here it is, to do fence work in Chester. The money comes from the federal government. Amtrak is the recipient of the funds and will con- conduct the work. The funds come from the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Program, which is one run by the U.S. Department of Transportation's Federal Railroad Administration. For seven point seven million dollars, that's going to be a lot of fencing, but that's a good thing. I guess this is a good time, as any, if you can see behind us, or if you had trouble getting into City Hall because of streets being blocked, there's some utility work being done due to a water main break. It's affected the entire downtown district, uh, between Edgemont and Welsh, Fifth and Seventh Streets. So if you are looking to, um, go to any of those businesses or offices, you may find them closed. I think the estimate, the latest estimate we got for everything being up and running again is Friday evening, is that right, Commish?
Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon, Friday evening. So, just expect some inconveniences if you're trying to get into the central business district. Uh, we have no ordinances, Madam Clerk, you can get it rolling.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone, number one, Frederick Wharton, ten twelve Concord Avenue, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three, and number two, George Whitmore, twenty-five thirty-five West Seventh Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined, the aforementioned individuals have met all the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the one thousand block of Concord Avenue and in the twenty-five hundred block of West Seventh Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint the following individuals as committee members for the block captain program with the terms to expire as stated. Michael Lewis, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Dakin Williams, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-six. Haley Garina, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the reorganization of this Chester City Council will be held on January sixth, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM, City Council Chambers, one, Fourth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, one nine zero one three, for the purposes of organization and appointments to various positions. Further, that it does authorize the city clerk to advertise said organization meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, the following is the list of the legal holidays for the City of Chester for the year twenty twenty-five. New Year's Day, Wednesday, January first. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, Monday, January twentieth. President's Day, Monday, February seventeenth. Good Friday, Friday, April eighteenth. Primary Election Day, Tuesday, May twentieth. Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-sixth. Flag Day, Friday, June thirteenth. Juneteenth, Thursday, June nineteenth. Independence Day, Friday, July fourth. Labor Day, Monday, September first. Indigenous Peoples' Day, Monday, October thirteenth. General Election Day, Tuesday, November fourth. Veterans' Day, Tuesday, November eleventh. Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November twenty-seventh, and Friday, November twenty-eighth. And Christmas Day, Thursday, December twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the City Council of the City of Chester will be holding deliberative-only meetings in City Council Chambers, one, Fourth Street, second floor, Chester, Pennsylvania, one nine oh one three, at two o'clock PM, prevailing local time, on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-five. January sixth and twenty-first. February tenth and twenty-fourth. March tenth and twenty-fourth. April seventh and twenty-first. May twelfth and twenty-seventh. June ninth and twenty-third. July seventh and twenty-first. August eleventh and twenty-fifth. September eighth and twenty-second. October sixth and twentieth. November tenth and twenty-fourth, and December eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second. Further, that the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester City Council will be held in City Council Chambers, Municipal Building, one, Fourth Street, second floor, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three, at ten o'clock AM, prevailing time, on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-five. Except where designated by an asterisk, which meetings will be held at seven o'clock PM, prevailing time. January eighth, January twenty-second. February twelfth and twenty-sixth. March twelfth, that's an evening, seven o'clock and twenty-sixth. April ninth and twenty-third. May fourteenth and twenty-eighth. June eleventh, that's a seven PM meeting. And June twenty-fifth, July ninth and twenty-third. August thirteenth and twenty-seven. September tenth is an evening meeting and twenty-fourth. October eighth and twenty-second. November twelfth and twenty-sixth. December tenth, it's an evening meeting. And December seventeenth and twenty-fourth. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? I'll just make a brief comment of, for those who really pay close attention, this year we had six evening meetings, and we looked at the administrative code and realized there's language in there that dictate that this council meeting schedule should be as listed here with just four evening meetings. So unless by referendum, there's a changed state administrative code, it will go back to what's on the books. Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester Aggregated Pension Board will be held in City Council Chambers, one, Fourth Street, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three, two thirty PM, prevailing local time, on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-five. January twenty-first, April twenty-first, July twenty-third, October twentieth. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to Pico for the installation of new natural gas services in the vicinity of Twenty-Fourth Street, Chestnut Street, Walnut Street, and Upland Street within the City of Chester that will require a one-foot trench at Twenty-Fourth Street for twelve hundred feet between Chestnut Street and Upland Street. The installation will also require a one-foot, six-inch trench at the following location. Chestnut Street for, for forty feet at the intersection of Twenty-Fourth Street. The installation will also require the following number of test holes at the following locations. Number one, twenty-four, three-foot by four-foot test holes on Twenty-Fourth Street. And number two, one, three-foot by four-foot test hole in the sidewalk on Walnut Street. Further, said permit is continued upon Pico's compliance with all the conditions outlined by the city engineer and performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council, specifically the following. Number one, Pico performs a full meal and overlay on all road openings exceeding one hundred feet or three patches within one hundred feet. Number two, Pico provides appropriate traffic control measures to ensure continual operation of city streets. Number three, Pico obtains all required road opening permits from the city as well as any other required permits.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Um, I do have a question, um, has the curb-to-curb ordinance went in effect yet?
Yes.
So, once this project is done, they will be required to do curb-to-curb?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots? Resolution, whereas the City of Chester entered into agreement zero six six three nine six B with PennDOT for the Lloyd Street Bridge over Amtrak, MPMS five seven 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 three project, and whereas PennDOT has projected an increase in final design from one million one hundred forty thousand dollars to one million two hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars as outlined in Exhibit A A A A. And whereas, eighty percent of the funding for this project is coming from the federal government, fifteen percent from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the cost-sharing agreements requires the city to contribute five percent of the project cost. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it, that it does authorize the proper city official to execute the letter of amendment to the PennDOT agreement zero six six three nine six C four, and on behalf of the City of Chester, for the Lloyd Street Bridge over Amtrak, MPMS five seven 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 three project, amending the city's local required match to two hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars to reflect the design changes, increasing the total project cost from five million four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars to five million five hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Further, said agreement is continued upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
Madam Clerk, um, did you say five million five hundred ninety-six dollars, seven hundred fifty, or sixty?
Seven fifty.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I do. Um, and I meant to ask this on Monday and deliberative, but is this the five percent that the city will have to contribute? Um, have we put that in for the next year's budget?
Yes, Councilman, that's in the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay, is that under capital improvements, or is there a specific line?
That's part of the capital improvement fund, correct.
Okay.
Okay, and just to piggyback on that question, I'll just, I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a statement. Those of us who've been in Chester for a while, we know this Lloyd Street Bridge has been out for a long time. A lot of the issue has been the expense, and I just think it's exciting to see that the city has to pay, well, to pay anything is, is something, but two hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars of a five-point-five million dollar total cost, it's pretty attractive, five percent. I think, uh, once upon a time, it was a ten percent ask, I don't know what the total cost was, uh, several years ago. But, that's a good deal. You're not going to get that anywhere else, so we're excited to see this bridge going back, getting back, it's going to take a little while, it's not easy to build bridges, it's extra hard to build a bridge over, over railroad tracks. So, I don't know the timeline of completion, but we know that we're going to get started at least. I want to thank Council Lady West for, uh, being very dogged with the Casey administration who helped us move this forward, so thank you.
And thank you for your support, too, Mayor, and I'd just like to go on record, thank you. I'd just like to go on record, um, thanking Senator Casey's office and members of PennDOT. We've been meeting every month on this, and, um, I really appreciate the support because I'd like to see this, um, bridge repaired and back in working order some, you know, within the next year. I don't think, like you said, it's not going to be that soon. Maybe not a year, but it's on its way. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, Madam Clerk?
Councillor Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester utilized commercial utility consultants to conduct an auction in order to obtain a series of quotes for electricity suppliers to provide services to city-owned properties. And whereas, based on the results of the latest auction undertaken December third, twenty twenty-four, Constellation New Energy, Inc., provided the lowest bid at a rate of zero point zero six one three nine per kilowatt hour for a twelve-month period. And whereas, the bid rate is lower than the average default rate of zero point zero eight four eight. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the Chief of Staff entering into an electricity supply agreement with Constellation New Energy, Inc., for the purchase and supply of electricity at the fixed-rate contract price of zero point zero six one three nine per kilowatt hour, beginning December twenty twenty-four, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said agreement. Further, said agreement is continued upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? I'll just make the comment that, you know, sometimes the language gets a little tricky here, but it says the bid rate is lower than the average default rate. Default rate is Pico, so we're not buying our electricity from Philadelphia Electric Company, we're going out on the market. They used to be called resellers, I don't know what the, the proper name is, but, what is it, Chief, a forty percent reduction, or forty, what's the percentage less than what the Pico rate is?
I know, uh, we have other people with calculators here, so I'll, I'll defer to them, but it's, uh, I, I know the increase, the decrease from the default rate with the six, uh, with the six cents per, uh, kilowatt hour is an increase over what we're paying now, because the last time we did this, it was a four-year contract, this is only a twelve-month contract. The energy markets right now are all over the place, so we ran a series of auctions, and this was the lowest rate that, that we received. So it's, yes, it's, it's lower than the default rate, but it's higher than the rate that we've been paying previously. Previously, we locked this in for a four-year contract, we're only locking this in for a one-year contract. We'll get into, um, probably into the late summer, early fall, and we'll run these auctions again to see what the energy markets support at that point in time.
Okay, and in all fairness, this isn't, this isn't the first time we've gone out on the market to get a better rate than Pico, it's just showing you that we're continuing to find any savings that we can, and our utility bills will continue to be a major expense in the city, and we're doing our best to get the lowest rate possible. Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the request for proposal, RFP, for animal control services options was received on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, be and the same, is hereby rejected as the aforementioned RFP exceeds the estimated amount.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I want to know what, um, what was the amount that was requested?
Councilman, there was, there was one respondent to this RFP, that respondent came in at a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which was well above and beyond what was projected. It was also the only respondent to the RFP, so, uh, and it was a lengthy study time as well, so that, that, for those reasons, we're recommending rejecting this, this bid.
And, um, also just for clarity, this was not a, um, bid to provide animal control services, but to actually just do a study? And we don't need to be spending a hundred and sixty, sixteen thousand dollars on a study. We, we know what our needs are, and so, um, all of us made the collective decision to reject this bid.
I agree.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the final inspection for the following projects has been conducted and has been determined that all outstanding punchless items have been completed to the satisfaction of the city's engineer. And whereas, after completion of the final inspection, the city is required to release any remaining escrow funds. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the release of the escrow funds for the following projects in the designated amounts for the stated reasons. Project name, eight sixteen West Sixth Street Site Improvement.
Second.
I'm sorry, but did I say? Sixth Street? Oh my goodness. Okay, eight sixteen West Second Street Site Improvement. Um, attention, Ali Tefrani, A and Y Properties, Berber Auto Sales, eight sixteen West Second Street, Chester, PA. Escrow amounts, twenty-four thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty cents. The reason it's completed. The next project name is three thousand West Fourth Street Site Improvement. Attention, Eric Carlson, Alliance Fourth and Booth, LLC, three thousand West Fourth Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. The escrow amount is sixty-four thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and ten cents. The reason it's, it is completed. Further, said releases are continued upon final approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Councillors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, resolved, the City of Chester does hereby adopt the resolutions set forth below and certify that such resolutions are in accordance and conformity with the depositors' governing documents, all agreements with third parties, and all laws applicable to the depositor. Resolved, that Santander Bank be and hereby is, has designated a depository for the funds of the city pro- subject to the terms and conditions of the Business Deposit Account Agreement with authority to accept at any time for the credit of the city's deposits in checking, saving, money market savings, term, or any other account by whomsoever made in whatever manner endorsed. And resolved that the bank shall not be liable in connection with the collection of such items that are handled by the bank without negligence, and the bank shall not be liable for the acts of its agents, subagents, or for any other casualty. And resolved that the city assumes full responsibility and shall indemnify the bank against all losses, liabilities, and claims resulting from payments, withdrawals, or orders made or purported to be made in accordance with, or from actions taken in good faith and in reliance upon these resolutions. And resolved that the bank be and hereby is, authorize and directed to certify, pay, or otherwise honor all checks, dra- and directed to certify, pay, or otherwise honor all checks, drafts, notes, bills of exchanges, acceptances, undertakings, and other instruments, or orders for the payment, transfer, or withdrawal of money for whatever purpose and to whomsoever payable when such instruments and orders are properly made, signed, or endorsed by the signature, the actual or purported fesimal signature, or the oral direction of any of the authorized signers below, provided, however, that any check, draft, note, bill of exchange, acceptance, undertaking, or other instrument for the payment, transfer, or withdrawal must bear the actual or purported fesimal signature of any of the authorized signers below, and resolved that any authorized signer acting alone be and hereby is authorized on behalf of the city to endorse, negotiate, and collect any and all checks, drafts, notes, bills of exchange, acceptances, undertakings, and any other instruments, and to open and close and update information on any account of the city at the bank, and resolved that any of the authorized signers below acting alone be and hereby is authorized on behalf of the city to instruct orally or by such other means as the bank may make available to city that bank to initiate the transfer of funds by wire, telex, automated, clearinghouse, book, entry, compute, or such other means, and to execute agreements with the bank for the transfer of funds from any of the city's accounts, and to delegate from time to time to other persons the authority to initiate the transfer of funds from any such account, and resolved that any authorized signer acting alone be and hereby is authorized on behalf of the city to enter into a written lease for the purpose of renting, maintaining, and assessing a safe deposit box, and any authorized signer is authorized authorized to terminate the lease, and resolved that the bank may rely on any signature, endorsement, or order, and any fesimal signature or oral instruction reasonably believed by the bank to be made by any authorized signer, and the bank may act on any direction of an authorized signer without inquiry and without regard to the application of the proceeds thereof, provided that the bank acts in good faith, and resolved the bank may rely on this document and on any certificate by any authorized representative of the city as to the names and signatures of the authorized signers of the city until the bank has actually received written notice of a change and has had a reasonable period of time to act on such notice, and resolved that the city agrees to notify the bank promptly and in writing of any change in, A, these resolutions, I'm sorry, these, that's right, these resolutions, B, the identity of persons authorized to sign, endorse, or otherwise authorize payments, transfers, or withdrawals, C, ownership of the city or the city's legal structure or status, including the city's dissolution of bankruptcy, and resolved that any of the following person or persons from time to time holding offices of the city be and hereby are designated as the authorized signers to act on behalf of the city in accordance with the above resolutions. Richard Troutman, Chief Financial Officer, Eleanor Golsen, City Treasurer, Michael Hurst, City Accountant, Joy Taylor, City Controller, Thomas Moore, Chief of Staff, resolved that there are no other persons currently designated as authorized signers on behalf of the city. The city is controlled by a governing body. Each individual executing this document certifies and warrants that she, he, or she is duly authorized to act on behalf of the city in all matters pertaining to its rights, responsibilities, and activities in connection with the foregoing, including, but not limited to, executing this document on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
That was an excellent read.
That was a lot.
Questions, comments? Madam Clerk, got anything left?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
That concludes the, we didn't have any ordinances, resolutions. Do we have any reports from our committees?
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. We'll try this again. Good evening, everyone. Okay, yeah, there we go. I knew y'all could hear me. There we go. So, the Budget Committee meeting will be held next Monday, December 16th, at 1:30 PM in Council chambers.
Very good. Thank you.
There's no meeting scheduled for public works.
I don't think any of the, any meetings? Any Department heads, anything to report? Chief Staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on. Have a couple presentations tonight? Or we have one presentation and one announcement. Carol Firing, come on up.
I know your last name. I was trying to remember your title.
I'm Vice President of Chester Historical Preservation Committee.
I was about to call her the President, so I'm glad I asked. So, I will hold those. We'll put these here, and she is here today to make a presentation to a couple students in the Chester School District for...
Chester Historical Preservation Committee had an art contest, and the contest winners are here. I don't know if you have both of them, but I know there's at least one tonight, and we're going to be giving them their awards. So, with that, I'd like to call forward. I'm not certain how to pronounce the name, but I...
Aria? Aria?
Aria Nelson?
Okay.
I guess her parents aren't here. Okay, then we can do that. All right. And the other wonderful award winner is Akai Bailey. Did I say that correctly? Mr. Bailey, want to come forward, please? Which one was yours? I'm not sure. This one, that's wonderful. Now, the contest was to do something in reference to William Penn, because all of you know, of course, the City of Chester is where William Penn originally arrived. He arrives here in Chester on October the 28th, on the 28th, in 1600s. Actually, we do this every year, the award. So, with that, I'd like to show you the picture that he has done, and he says here, and one of the quotes from his writings is, "Men must be governed by God, or they will be ruled by tyrants." And Penn wrote in many, many, many articles, essays, and declarations, too. I don't know if you know it, but William Penn, the basics of his concept is the United Nations, which I thought was rather interesting. So with that, I'd like to give him the award and say congratulations, and I think we're going to keep the picture because we want to keep that as a record, and maybe we could hang it somewhere here in City Hall.
It's already on display. So for those of you who come into the lobby, it's in a... It's in a cabinet, right to the right of the tax office where you would pay your tax bill. So we've kind of converted that display case into a space where the Chester Historical Preservation Committee puts historical stuff of Chester in there, and it, thank you so much for doing that. It's a beautiful display. She did a great job. So, Carol won't stop if you don't let her. She'll give you the history from William Penn all the way to...
But I just wanted to mention, I don't know if you know it, but I put, through Chester Historical, I put a museum in the high school library.
Recently?
Recently, yes. But the thing is, I can't get anyone to use it. None of the teachers come, none of the people have done anything. It's been there since September. I put it in there in August. So if you have any way of working with your school or your children, we do have it open to the public that they can come in. It's in the library in a separate room. So thank you very much for this evening.
All right. I think we're going to pose for a picture. You're going to shake Council's hand, but first, do you have any comments? Well, thank you for your art. Thank you for, congratulations on winning. Let's give him a hand. You're getting a little...
I'd like to know what time. So if someone wants to do a tour, would they contact you? Sure. Thank you. You, too.
All right. That was great. I want to take this opportunity to introduce a student that's working with us as an intern, a college student from Swalcmore College. Swalcmore College has a program that's been running for I don't know how many years. It's called Chester Semester, where they have a number of students coming to the City of Chester and work at the various nonprofits around town. I want to name them, but I know I'm going to forget a few. I know one of them is Chester Education Foundation. We have two here. I can't name them all, but if you don't mind standing, Mr. Adrian Duran Ray from Swalcmore College is here today. I just want to thank you for your work. He's working in the Department of Community and Economic Development, working specifically on the Main Street. Finish the sentence for me.
Main Street Matters Grant.
Come on up to the microphone, let us know what you're working on. Give us a little information about you.
Sure. I'm currently focusing on economic development grants for the city, so I looked at some other ones, mainly another named Chris, and then some of the Keystone programs. I'm currently settling on the Main Street Matters programs, which are grant funding that comes from the state, ideally to focus on some kind of central corridor. So here, we're looking at helping to develop and add to the Avenue of the State's corridor, to get funding from the state to further develop it.
So we call it Chester Semester, but it actually has morphed into a whole year, so we'll have you through next semester as well.
Yes, you will.
And he's about to go home for, I guess you have finals first and then going home for the holidays.
Yep. Back to Florida.
Have a, oh, wow. You want to take some with you with him. No, but thank you so much for your work this year. You're a gem. I think last year you worked in the District Attorney's Office.
Yeah, I was in the DA's office in media.
Okay. So here's a guy who is really committed to not just being a college student, but contributing to the community in which the college is in, and that's very admirable. Thank you so much. Enjoy your Christmas break. See you in January.
Will do.
When do you graduate?
I'm sorry?
When do you graduate?
2027.
And then you'll come work for us?
Law school first.
We need a good grant writer. And another one, I should say.
Yeah, but to that point, I would love to initiate it a apprenticeship program, which kind of makes those things happen. So, we're going to be looking at that in 2025. It's your turn, public comment. So, for those of you who have signed the sheet, come on up. If you haven't signed the sheet, sign the sheet. Just put your name, address on there. Thank you, Commissioner. Did you want to sign?
I already signed.
You already signed? You're like the pastor. You're just going to walk on up, huh? But you know you were first, right?
Yes.
Okay, Alton Loper?
Yes.
All right. You have three minutes. The clock will start above our head.
Good evening, Council.
Don't let the clock, there you go.
Mr. Mayor. Council, I have a problem with, I heard that thing, say something, say something. I don't come to the council meetings, but I do watch them on YouTube, and I think the last council meeting, you were complaining about the heavy trash and the pickup and the equipment wearing down. I live in Chester. I've lived here for 80 years, and I tried to get in touch with heavy trash because I saw that they were doing private jobs for private contractors. I've called heavy trash on numerous times, and I can't get anything but a message. I sent an email to your office, and I got a reply back from Justin Tibble, and he told me that he was sending it over to somebody from Community, not Community Affairs, but Andrew Hayman, Director of Public Works. I've heard nothing from no one. This truck has been there twice for private contractors and using the city to, you know, clean out houses. I know for sure because my brother just sold his house, and they were there cleaning out his house, and the city picked it up.
Okay. So, first of all, thank you for bringing that information forward. Andrew Hayman is here. Raise your hand, Andrew. After the meeting, please.
Okay, I have pictures and videos of it.
Yeah, we need to know about that. I appreciate it. Reset the clock, Reverend Thaddeus Kirkland.
Before I get started, I would like to hand Council and Mayor some information, please. Good morning, I'm sorry, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here representing Community Baptist Church, of which I am the pastor. Community Baptist Church, of which I am the pastor. Thank you. Thank you. So I handed you some information from an article. I think it was in the papers today. And some of the questions, I'm going to rattle off real fast, pertaining to that article. Some of them. Number, the first question I have is, you know, we had this conversation before, where are we concerning the White Capitol Project, the downtown project that would provide jobs and revenue for the city of Chester? The last time I asked that question, I was told that we're going to get it done. Those were the words that were given to me. This question number one. The second one is, whatever became of the other ghost employee investigation. Last time I came here, it said that that investigation was in the DA's office. And I haven't heard anything since. Number three, and this goes towards those, that article that was in the Daily Times. Which administration did the police pension scandal start? And the article says 2009. I asked that same question to the receiver. In that sense, you guys have a better relationship than I do to the receiver. I asked that same question and it was never given the answer. The article says 2009. In 2009, there was another mayor. There were another person now who were in place. So I think we always talk about full disclosure. Then let's, let's be about full disclosure. Once again, who was the mayor at that time? If the information in this article is true, and just for the, for, just for those persons who are here, I do have a few more of those articles left. If people in the audience would like some, I would share that with them. If that information is true, then somebody ought to go to jail. Somebody ought to go to jail. What is it called? The Facet Program?
Facade?
Facade, facade, I'm sorry. Facet Program. Just want to know how many businesses fall under that program? Because I know it was promoted as being, it was on the news and everything, big program coming to Chester. And I just want to know how many, how many, how many businesses fall under that? Also, if I can, if you can tell me how many people, on April 22nd, 2009, who were the members of the Chester Pension Board? 2009. And I think it's important that all of Council understand this and knows this. And this be shared with them. In 2009, who were the members of the Chester Pension Board? And the reason I say that, because if you don't find out where the problem started and fix it there and identify it, it'll happen again. Oh, and this is real good. Was Mr. Kapoor working in the city of Chester in 2009? 2010? I mean, that's a question and, and I'm hoping that Mayor and Council will follow up with that. Because if he was working in the city of Chester in 2009, 2010, wouldn't he have some knowledge of the pension problem scandal? Just, just throwing that out there. How much money does the city's new parking, not authority, but the parking company that's going to be dealing with our collection and everything, how much money has the company generated for the city thus far? And finally, how much money has the city paid to the new parking company thus far? Thank you. And like I said, if you didn't read the Daily Times, I'm not a reader of the Daily Times. I just happened to go online and I saw this. If there are persons who would like for me to share this information with them, I'm more than happy. I'm more than happy to share with you the contracts, contracts, signed, sealed, delivered contracts. I got all five of them. I got all five of them and, I got one more second. All five of them. And I want you to see as Council, Mayor and Council, the type of money, the type of money. Once again, I'll say it, they came in as a team and now all of a sudden, they're consultants to the receiver. Somebody ought to investigate that. Somebody ought to go to jail.
Thank you. All right, thank you. As many are aware, you know, public comment, I've tried to keep it to comments and not Q and A. To your credit, you're not asking for answers right now, but let's go through a couple of those. The White, the White Capitol Project is a apartment, a proposed apartment complex to come here in downtown Chester. I think I was the one who said it's going to get done. I think it's a matter of just bringing the parties back to the table. Is that close to being correct, Chief?
Receiver was on site today. One of their consultants who's involved in this project had a brief conversation with him and I think we're working on a path forward.
So I'm still confident that's going to happen. In fact, we all want that to happen. It would be a big shot in the arm for, for downtown Chester to bring. I was going to say state of the art, but I'll say a new market REA apartment complex could really grow our downtown area. So that's, that's an important project. It really is. I want to be clear on your ghost employee reference. You didn't name one or the other, but I, you, you mentioned it's at the DA's office. I think it's actually at the Attorney General's. It was reported to the Attorney General. If it's the one I'm, I'm thinking you're referring to. Is it the old one or the new one? Let's say that.
The new one.
The new one. That's at the Attorney General's, I believe. I haven't seen any updates, any rulings, anything. So I really can't tell you what they're doing up there in Harrisburg with that one. I know pretty soon we're going to have a new AG. So maybe they're passing it on. We don't know. But we'll keep an eye on that as well. 2009, who was the mayor? I think it was Butler? Facade Program, how many businesses? It's sort of a, it depends and it's not a cop-out answer. But once it's determined how much it costs determines how many will get done. It's going to be close to a dozen in the first round. So what a facade program is, primarily for the downtown district, you know, businesses are eligible if they apply and if they qualify for up to $10,000, $50,000 of improvements. I know some of the program has been tweaked from when it originally came out, but the whole idea is to make the outside of these buildings as you drive particularly down Avenue of the State, look as good as the insides. You know, many of our entrepreneurs in town have really done a great job turning old buildings into beautiful event spaces, stores, eateries. But if you drive down the street, they don't look much different than they did before that work is done. I think the program, is it $1 million is the pot?
It's $2 million in ARPA funds that's funding the facade improvement program.
So the final number will be determined by what the price per improvement will be. But it's somewhere around 10 to 12 in the first round. And as far as Mr. Kapoor is concerned, that really wasn't the question. Contract for the parking management company, do we remember what the contract amount was?
There, there's a management fee as part of the agreement with Premium Parking. And then there are billable expenses for salary and other overhead that's, that's conducted with the work that Premium Parking does. So there's, the contract is depending on the billable hours, basically.
All right. So if you need more details, let's connect outside. We have each other's numbers and emails. Fair enough. Okay, very good. And I think we have one other that has, no, two other. Tyra Star.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm just here representing the Chester Business District. And I did just hear a little bit about the facade program. I just want to read a release that came out July 15, 2024. A portion of it says, "The FEI Program will provide grants up to $50,000 per property to eligible commercial buildings owners, allowing them to transform their establishment visual appeal." This is to begin 2025 and end 2026. Are we saying in this release that this program will only take one year? How long does it take to beautify, beautify two blocks? When I've seen certain communities beautify their blocks within a summer. I just want to be clear that it's going to take one year, 2025 to 2026, to beautify our downtown area per the press release. That's all I have to say.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure that timeline is, is the timeline is consistent with the guidelines of the ARPA funds, which are being used to fund that program. So the money has to be spent by 2026?
Mayor, it's, it's by the end of 2026. So December 31st, 2026. So technically, it's two years.
Yes. The end date is by December 31st, 2026. But I know the nature of your question is, does it take that long to get it all done? No, that is not why that date is put there. It's just put there that we don't want to send any of those ARPA dollars back. So in that period between the workers, the project work has already begun, but it has to be completed before December 31st. We would all expect that these facades will be completed before then, before December 31st, 2026. And without introduction, here she is, Ms. Lydia Smith. Good evening.
Hello. I heard something about the parking authority. If I'm recalling correctly, you rescinded the Parking Authority Commission? And if so, how does one find out what restrictions that they have when they have guest parking in the neighborhood? You know, after they take everybody's $25. Last time, they didn't charge anybody. But after they took everybody's $25, there was some restrictions passed that you can only have one guest. So I guess you're limiting the amount of company people can have. But I just need to know, where can I find that information on what is the requirement with this parking authority? Secondly, you had about R129. And you said it's going to take some time. Do you have an anticipated time when the work will, will start? And then last question is, when people rent, you know, maybe park, you want to rent something in the park or something in a community room, and they wish to not use, use that, do they get a refund of their money? Thank you.
All right. I guess we can stress all those. Let's start from the last one to first. Community room. Do they get refunds if they cancel before they have an event? Is that your question?
Yeah, not just the community. Any of your problems. Don't you charge for usage of parking that have events at park.
I know we've given refunds. I don't, honestly, I don't know. Anybody up here know what the
I think there's a cutoff.
I believe there is a cutoff.
By would you get the money back, you know, and what that cutoff was? I don't know.
Either Ms., yeah, Ms. Johnson, she handles all the permits and all the fees and everything. But I know there is something, I know they wasn't doing some certain refunds. I'm not sure that whole, what that looks like. I'm not sure what the whole program is. So there's something we'll have to get back to.
Somebody get back.
Something in writing, or write something? Or should somebody write something?
I can, I can speak to Ms. Johnson and have her give you an email, send you an email with something in writing.
Okay, Andrew, do you, Mr. Hayman, can, can you help me with the timeline for Lloyd Street project work? I mean, we're not doing the work, so I'm not sure if you've received the detailed project plan on estimated completion date?
And that year was wishful thinking on my part.
Are they? I mean, in some regard, it has already started by acquiring parcels of land. So you want to see the first, yeah, whole dug truck out there, hard hets and whatnot.
But just to be clear, we're talking about the Lloyd Street Bridge?
Lloyd Street Bridge.
So Councilwoman West is going to be a lot more knowledgeable about this than I am. I recall them saying they plan to start in 2026. Does that sound correct, Councilwoman?
Yeah. That, that sounds like I have to confirm it. And I'll let you know, Lydia. But 2026 sounds like
Can I add something? There is still one aspect of an eminent domain case pending and it should be concluded shortly.
That's that property on Lloyd Street, right at the end of the road there?
We're just waiting for
I thought we had got
We filed and we're 90% done. We're waiting for a final court order.
Councilwoman West and I have a meeting next week, a monthly status update meeting with Pendot about the bridge. I'll reach out to them tomorrow morning and try to find out that specific answer. Just review the timeline again with them.
All right, thanks.
No problem.
I can't stress enough how complicated this, this piece of work is. I mean, besides having to do work over hot power lines that are over the tracks, some of the Amtrak, Conrail, whoever uses the tracks, SEPTA are going to have to do schedule coordination. So
Your Honor.
It's a big job.
Previously this evening, we adopted the amendment to their budget. It should be noted that that $5.6 million is for final design, right of way, and utility. That's not for construction. So they're still in the final design, they're in utility and right of way acquisitions. So there's, there's additional soft costs that they need to do before they actually get to the hard costs. So this is going to be much more than a five and a half million dollar project. This is, this is the soft costs.
Okay. And Council resolved to dissolve the Chester Parking Authority. Let's make that clear. So we refer to the company that's downstairs. When you come into the front doors to the right at that window is the Parking Management Company, Premium, Premium Parking. That's where you would go to their window. They do have a website as well. Justin, do you know the question that Ms. Smith asked is addressed on their website?
Let me take this.
Okay, thank you.
We had, we had the, the meeting at Wyden University. You, you attended. I know Councilman and, and Councilwoman West attended as well. There's that study that's being underdone right, undertaken right now with THY. I think those recommendations are coming shortly in the next few weeks, I understand. One of the things that they're addressing is the, the visitors' parking as part of the residential parking program. So that's going to be assessed as part of that study. They're, they're only ticketing those, those violations where cars are, for example, parked in the crosswalk too close to a fire hydrant. They're not ticketing people or giving tickets because they don't have the residential permit, permit parking program. Yeah, they're, they're, they've done a series of warnings, but they haven't offered tickets for those cars who haven't registered for the program, for visitors, for example. But they will. Well, once we get the study results back, we'll share that with, with Council and then any, any recommendations that come from that. We may need to make some changes to the ordinance and then we'll make those changes and then the enforcement can really ramp up. As, as long as you invite me, yes.
From what I understand, you can walk. You don't have to worry about parking on that block.
That's my neighbor.
That's my number.
That concludes the public comments, people who signed up. I guess I'll turn it over to Council. Do you guys have anything to add?
No, I just wanna say thank you to all those who responded for Thanksgiving to help our seniors at, what is the Edgemont or the Gateway? We were able to feed over a hundred and fifty people on Thanksgiving and we were well-received. And I, again, I just wanna say thank you for those who stepped up and gave to that cause. It was very much appreciated. Some seniors were overwhelmed at the amount of food that they were able to receive because they struggle in that area. So thank you very much for all of your help concerning that. And then I want to just mention that on the fifteenth, it's on a Sunday, at the First Pentecostal Church, there's going to be a Christmas event. And we're gonna have the brunch and cotton candy and all of that. So for all of you who are in the Christmas spirit, bring those children out so that they can receive a free toy. And thank you to Sergeant Ross for his diligence in making sure that our community's children have received those toys.
I will instruct you guys to pick this up if you haven't already. There's a lot of Christmas events coming up. The Hometown Heroes, that banner program that you see in all other communities or many other communities that were starting here. We are taking applications for that program. The banners won't be going up right away, but when you submit your, your application with your hometown hero, veteran, active service, deceased service member with the bio, there is a website which their full bio will go on right away. So whether or not they end up on a banner, they will definitely show up on the website. Help me, Justin, what's the, what's the address of the site? And I think we already have a couple, a couple veterans in there.
Yes, sir. So we created a webpage on the city's site. It's chestercity.com/veterans. And if you go to that site, it'll have, you know, the details for the Hometown Heroes program, the application. And as the mayor just mentioned, we also are working on creating a just online Veterans Hall so that, you know, the Hometown Hero banners, that is a paid thing that'll happen. But we wanted to have a free option so you can actually list Chester veterans on the website for free, their photo, bio, rank, those sorts of things. So we have a couple and you can just go on and fill out the form to submit that for free.
All right, thanks. Carol Firing was here from the Chester Historical Preservation Committee to give that certificate to the student who did the artwork. A big part of her value to Chester is just, just always being top of mind, top of awareness on Chester history. And tomorrow, it is tomorrow, right?
At eleven AM.
Eleven AM, just outside this door, that little park that's across the street with the clock. Sign will be revealed to memorialize Marquis Lafayette's fiftieth anniversary tour here in the city of Chester. So that sign will be unveiled following that. And this is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of that event. So for those who didn't know, Lafayette was a big part of us winning the American Revolution. He was partnered up with George Washington during the Revolutionary War. Fifty years later, he just came back to take a vow. So that's what that represents. So this beautiful sign is gonna be erected tomorrow, recognizing that. And then this, if you do your math, the seventeen twenty-four courthouse is three hundred years old this year. So there'll be recognition of that tomorrow following the Lafayette sign unveiling, which will consist of a lot of proclamation certificates being read from Mary Gay Scanlon, Senator Kane, Carol Kazim, our state rep, and the city. I don't know if they'll all read, they'll, they'll be presented. So the county will be here, probably some people from the state. So if you're a real history buff, tomorrow's your day. Come on out, bundle up. But do remember, the streets are gonna be, some streets will be blocked off because of the utility work that's out there. You can always park in our parking lot over here, if there's open spaces. And it's really convenient to the park across the street. Anything else?
One Christmas event that's not on here is Dr. Rodney Bradley and Friends Choir is having this Saturday at Cornerstone Ministries at four o'clock, a Christmas program. So you're all, the tickets are, they're ten dollars, but if you'd like to have a ticket and you don't have the ten dollars, you can see me.
Never seen Rodney Bradley and Friends? That's a top-notch gospel group right here in the city of Chester. It's phenomenal. I think we have a member of the choir right here, next to me. All right. I think that is all of our business. Need to double check, my guys? Yeah, we're good. Thank you guys for coming out in this inclement weather. It really means a lot to us. Again, these are always recorded, they're online, probably a day or two after the, after the session.
Hi.
Hi, what? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move.
Second.
All right. Meeting adjourned. I don't know.